Okay, we'll call the regular city council meeting March first, 2023 at 7:00 PM to order. Could you please stand and join me in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
Kristin Carpenter is absent. Ken Jones.
Here.
That's a form of counsel.
Tom says he's having trouble getting back in. I told him to shut down and try again. Everybody else seems to be working?
Yeah.
Okay, approve of the regular agenda. Any objection to the agenda? If you're done then we'll approve the agenda. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. I don't think there was anything on the agenda for that today, huh? Comments or communications by and petition for visitors. We do have a couple of guest speakers tonight. I think Rachel Colander and Melissa Kukach is on the line. Yes? Rachel, you want?
Yes, sir, we are good. Yes, we are.
Okay, go ahead. We'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm just gonna share my screen and Melissa will kick off our presentation.
We don't hear Melissa.
You mean, sorry.
Okay, there we go.
What a great way to start.
My name is Melissa Kukach and I just wanted to thank you for having us. And if I could, I was hoping that maybe we could just quickly introduce myself as well as Rachel. And I believe we have one more gal on the line. But my name is Melissa Kukach and I'm Kaukanahtabaskan as well as Klinget. My parents are Lena Woods and the late Floyd Kukach of Engoon. They are the younger siblings to Sally and the late Senator Albert Kukach. Some of you may know me from my work in Senator Stedman's office for the last seven years. But I have been with Commerce since last year and have been in this position as a tribal liaison since October of 2022. And I just wanted to hand it over quickly to Rachel and Emily to do a quick introduction.
Hello, everyone. Happy to be with you. I am born and raised Cordova. So happy to be on the line with you. My name is Rachel Colander. For the record, I'm CEO of Colander and Associates and in this capacity tonight, a contractor for the Rasmussen Foundation. And my colleague Emily is on the line as well to speak.
Yes, my name is Emily Pay. I am a senior associate with Colander Associates and also a contractor with the Rasmussen Foundation. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. So, let's see. So broadband and digital equity was a result of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Our office, the Alaska Broadband Office, was created through the passage of House Bill 363 in this last session and was signed into law. Our office was officially stood up in September of 2022. And we currently have four employees in our office. We have our director, Thomas Lochner, and we have a senior project manager, Lisa Von Bargen, and an admin specialist, Anissa Fero, and myself as a tribal liaison. We have been in the process of establishing our office and making sure it stood up properly. We have a website under Commerce, under the Department of Commerce. It's on the state website. And if you have any questions from there, we're happy to answer them. We're happy to set up any future meetings if you'd like. But I just wanted to give you a little snippet of the Alaska Broadband Office. And so basically, we have been stood up to provide Internet for all. And that includes the entire state. And we have 112 communities that are considered served. We have 80 communities with projects coming in. And that's through previous funding that was received through different avenues, I believe. I know Cordova Telephone Cooperative received the Reconnect funding for your community as well as Valdez. And we also have, our job is basically to provide Internet for the entire state. And so like I said, we have 112 communities that are served. We have 80 communities with projects coming in. And we have 196 communities that are considered underserved or unserved. And that is our job as the Alaska Broadband Office is to be able to provide Internet to all of these communities. And if you go to our website, there are a couple of different things that we have going on. We have the map of Alaska with a draft plan for connecting all of the communities. And we are hoping that people can help us and chime in with that as well as a capital cost model, which would show how much it would cost to build to certain communities depending on if they need Subsea, if they need ground inlay. It just depends. But all of that information can be found on our website. And I think my information is also at the end of the presentation. So I'm gonna hand it over to you, Rachel.
Great, thank you, Melissa. So I'll speed through my slides a bit because I know that you probably have a very full agenda. And we're thankful for the time that we have. Really quickly, why is Rasmussen involved in a broadband initiative? As Melissa mentioned, there is something within the infrastructure bill that you've all heard much about that was passed in Congress called the Digital Equity Act. The Rasmussen Foundation in this capacity is in essence supporting the state by exploring digital equity with a digital equity or broadband equity initiative. And I'll go into a bit about how we're doing that. So the broadband initiative goals are to provide all Alaskans with access to high-speed reliable broadband. And in fact, the whole plan nationally, it includes $42.45 billion to expand or guarantee high-speed Internet for all Americans. So we're aiming to get a slice of that. And in order to apply, as you're familiar with as a municipality, we need to make sure that we have engaged the state correctly to really achieve that end in terms of full transparency with full equity. So access to high-speed reliable broadband is a top priority at affordable prices. Equitable and transparent process that engages all communities results in strong government structures to ensure programmatic goals. Digital equity, again, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration has engaged in this for a long time. Alaskans are starting to learn more about it. Thankfully now, we have a full state office team set up to guarantee that long into the future for future generations. But it's the condition in which individuals and communities like Cordova have the information and tech capabilities that is needed to participate fully, which we know includes high-speed Internet in 2023 and beyond. So the Digital Equity Act, very briefly condensing a huge act down into three main points, provides digital skills training, improves online accessibility, and empowers, in this case especially pertinent to Alaska rural communities. So the planning will lead to implementation in a couple of different ways. And to be honest, that is more so the expertise of the office that Melissa serves. But I'll touch on it quickly here. Each state will identify the barriers to digital equity in their state and for their state and propose basically the strategies to overcome those barriers. And that is part of this huge plan that we are engaged in all across the state right now to help develop, to ensure that that is proposed to the federal government in such a way that Alaska can have the max benefit with that funding. For the Alaska portion of that $42.45 billion that I referenced that was passed, we are aiming for, and I can't say "we," I mean, I'm saying "we" as an Alaskan, not because I run the broadband office, but I see Melissa nodding her head and she's also from rural Alaska, so I think she agrees with me. We're hoping to do this in such a way that the proposal that's really sent back can guarantee and aim for somewhere in the ballpark, and that's a big ballpark, $400 to $550 million for Alaska broadband upgrades and infrastructure. And so this is my last slide, then I'll kick it over to Melissa. So the covered populations that are really, really critical within this legislation are the following. Low-income individuals, individuals aged 60 or older, incarcerated individuals, veterans, individuals with disabilities, individuals with language barriers, members of minority group, and rural Alaskans. So those are sort of these key demographic groups that although we are chasing after inclusion efforts and listening sessions will go into all the mechanisms that we're trying to implement statewide, we are sort of asking ourselves day in and day out right now, are we really tackling each of these groups? Because that has been sort of handed down to us as key covered population groups to ensure that there's full inclusion and transparency with from the federal government. Melissa?
Thank you. So the Alaska Digital Equity Plan will also include a statewide vision for digital equity and digital equity framework and scorecard plans for digital literacy and innovation programs. And digital literacy ranges from your grandparents being able to get online safely, being able to turn on the computer, you know, just anything under the sun that has to do with the Internet and plugging it in. Proposed technology-related apprenticeships and other workforce opportunities. And that definitely is something that Melissa Von Bargen in our office is working on with the workforce opportunities around the state with the different VoTECs and projects that are currently in place as well as integration with the state's upcoming economic development strategy, educational and health outcomes, and civic and social engagement and action steps to implement the Digital Equity Plan. So the digital equity is part of our state broadband plan and that includes the state Digital Equity Plan plus the tribal digital equity plan and the state broadband planning. So that includes the Rasmussen Foundation and all of their partners that they have been gathering to cover the populations to make sure that we're targeting all of those different populations. And then the tribal digital equity plan. We have many, many different organizations working on that part. And that's like with AFN, Denali Commission, Rural CAP, anybody who's, you know, involved in the native community is definitely offering assistance in helping provide their side of the digital equity plan, including the state broadband planning, which includes how the build-out would work. And that includes, and that overall will create our state five-year broadband action plan. So our planning process, this one's mine, right? Our planning process includes a listening tours and basically listening to understand, outreach to our covered populations, data collection and analysis, other planning efforts, the consideration for strategies that respond to identified needs and gaps or barriers, consult with a diverse digital equity working group, as well as reflection in the draft of Alaska's Digital Equity Plan and receive public comments from Alaskans and prepare for implementation efforts. So our partners with the Rasmussen Foundation and several others that we have onboard, I believe AML and AFN also, will include the listening session tour with the key populations. They'll be in-person, virtual, and possibly hybrid. We'll have public representation, public comment process, social media, email, and other media to raise awareness, and local advertisements and public service announcements because we realize that some of these communities and target populations that we're trying to reach, if they don't have access to Internet, then they certainly cannot look it up online. And so definitely trying to get to all the media outlets possible as well as partner with community anchor institutions to help distribute information moving forward. So currently to date, we've had, we have scheduled 48 public meetings. We're traveling to the hub communities to cover the populations, to the covered populations, to ensure participation. And this process has been going on since when I first started in October, which was mid-October, to next month, or two more months. The majority of the listening sessions will take place and have taken place in the fall through the spring of this year, 2023, and attendance at regularly scheduled events for the covered populations. And I know one of the things that we have, it hasn't been sent out yet, but we do, the state of Alaska will also be having listening sessions where you can call in to find out general information or you can call in on a different day. And that will be for technical questions. And that's also listed on our website under the Department of Commerce. Thank you.
Melissa, really quick to wrap this up. What we're doing here tonight with you all is to try to just introduce some of these concepts. Where did this come from? Why are we doing it? And what is on the table for Alaska? So an engagement tour, and this is more so on the Rasmussen specific side to this digital equity piece. These are the hub communities that we have identified and more could be added easily, where we will be traveling in person to do in-person listening sessions, meet with partners. And that's where we really want to hear from you as community leaders in advance to these visits. We don't have locked-in dates yet. We're working with community partners to make sure it works. Like for example, I might suggest as a Cordovan, we not come in early May when the Copper River Fleet is getting ready to go out. No one would be free enough to meet with us. So we are taking all those things into consideration with each hub community. But the engagement tour is a really important, critical in-person piece as well on top of the other virtual opportunities that the state and others are doing. And finally, you know, a required element of the plan is an asset inventory. So there's a great deal of research being done now by very technical team members who are broadband experts into the assets and inventory and infrastructure that's already available in Alaska. What's working, what's not working? However, I would say that in certain parts of the state, like Cordova, a community not connected by road, taking stock of what works and what doesn't work is unique to each region. And so that's another area where we hope to hear from municipalities who are so intimately tied with the available infrastructure in their area. These are sort of our questions to you to chew on in terms of how you might get involved as a community. Are there convenings that we can come to in person or participate in to gain input? Are there covered populations? Or maybe there are nonprofits that serve those populations in your community that we should be actively engaging? And do you have any of your own pre-existing initiatives that have worked on digital equity or broadband efforts that we should be aware of? And that might tie into the engagement tour or that might tie into the asset inventory? We're curious to sort of look at this holistically with each community and region. This is our contact information. I can also drop that in the chat for you. We are available now for any questions. Thank you so much for your time. I think what I'll do, if you'd like me to, is stop sharing my screen. But I will also provide this to the city clerk to ensure that you have our contact information. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? None from the table here. How about online? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Awesome, that means we provided all of the information you needed.
Yeah, perfect. Well, thank you, Rachel and Melissa, and one other one was there.
Emily.
Emily.
And Emily, yeah.
Thank you for speaking to us. And we look forward to the next visit when we can get into a little more detail, maybe. So thank you.
Absolutely. And we'll be sure to notify the city when the in-person will occur as well. But thank you so much for your time. And I'll send these slide decks over right now to Susan to be sure that you will have access to them.
Okay, thank you very much. Susan, can you distribute?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, audience comments regarding agenda items. Anybody have any comments? You're not all running to the, I think we got one, two, three, about six people in the audience for those online. Okay, then Chairperson's representatives, the boards of commissions. Anybody from CCMC on? School board?
No, I haven't heard from either, so no.
So council yet to do, so.
Nope.
They just had new elections.
Oh, okay.
I did talk to Kate.
Okay, good.
And they were going to.
Okay.
Then I talked to Cheryl. She was at the meeting yesterday.
Got it.
And she said they just got their new appointment.
New, okay, great.
At the school level, so we should be hearing from somebody in a short time. Okay, the consent calendar is before you.
On the consent calendar, I will take the roll. Ken Jones. Ken, are you still there? Tom Baylor?
Yes, sorry, stumbling for the, yes.
Okay, Ken is a yes. Tom Baylor on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Kristin Carpenter is absent. Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, thank you. The minutes were in the consent calendar, no bids, or proposals, contracts tonight. So move on to the reports of officers. Mayor's report, I did start up again the quarterly mayor's briefing with chairs of commissions and committees that council had. We had three or four attendances all yesterday, but it was good meeting. Nobody is currently requiring anything from us. But there's some work at the historical preservation. They're gonna have a meeting, they haven't had a meeting in about a year. So they're gonna meet and try to get a new chair. Planning Commission is going to appoint somebody to theirs. They're working on housing and waivers and such for people to do housing, to make housing a little easier in town. Tanya Harrison was just elected Chair of the Planning Commission. So anyway, things are moving along and hopefully we'll get a little bit better attendance next time. But we'll plan on next quarter sometime. So I guess the only other thing I might have that you'll be seeing here in the next little while is Admiral of the Navy for our region is planning a trip up here April 17th and 18th. And I think we'll schedule a time to, or at least myself and Helen and maybe Colin or some other people can meet with them. But if anybody's interested in meeting with the Admiral, let me know and we'll include you in that. So any questions for me? Okay, move on to the city manager's report. Helen?
Thank you. We don't have a South Harbor rebuild update. We're plugging along, but there's no dramatically new information that would be beneficial or informative for council at this time. But I do want to introduce Gavin Schultz, who is, works for Altman Rogers and Company, a CPA firm. He's been in contract with us for the last year and holding us through some of our financial issues and problems and is here in residence with us this week, giving us ready for the audit and also working with staff on some refinements that we can make to make sure that we have information to share, not only at the management level, but with council on what our financial status is. So I want to give him an opportunity to just speak a little bit about where we're at and then give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And hopefully, I just want you to know that we have the right people on the job. We're just moving along. And Gavin will be to move to that mic because I know that's the hot mic. The hot mic, yeah. So again, Gavin Schultz with Altman Rogers.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Is this, can you hear me?
It's 12:00.
Yeah, I don't have any prepared remarks or anything specifically, but as Helen said, I'm here helping just starting now on 2022, you know, kind of all the year-end reconciliation stuff. And, you know, primarily within the last year, my role was essentially getting ready for your audit and dealing with your auditors. That's what I do all the other weeks of the year when I'm not contracting for Cordova. I'm an auditor. That's what I do for Altman Rogers. I've been doing it 10 or 11 years. So yeah, I don't have anything specific to say, but I'm happy to discuss anything or answer any questions. I know there's concerns about lack of current information. There seems to be recurring questions about things like the depreciation reserves in the enterprise funds and things like that. So I'm happy to discuss or answer questions.
We talked a little bit yesterday, I think it was, but you said you weren't gonna have numbers or anything. Now, but when do you think this council might see some semi-current numbers?
Well, and that's, you know, discussed that with Helen too. I, you know, I was, for a few months, I was providing those financial reports last year for a few months. And then I thought it was gonna be kind of taken over internally here, but it sounds like that hasn't happened. So I told Helen I'll just kind of put it back on my plate. Now, the issue becomes, you know, I can run you monthly reports out of CASL, the accounting system, but there's a lot of things throughout the year that are not being done, you know, to keep those current. So, you know, and I don't have the capacity or the time to be doing all the monthly stuff to keep up with that. I really, you know, I kind of come in at the end and, you know, get it all ready for the audit and reconcile it all, which is unfortunate. So, you know, we can get you monthly reports every month, but they may change significantly once everything gets reconciled, you know, once all the accruals are recorded and all the adjustments and reconciliations are performed. So, you know, specifically 2022 are you asking about or on a regular monthly basis?
On a regular.
A regular monthly basis, yeah.
With some degree of assuredy, but it wouldn't have to be, you know, if you could say, you know, I'm 75% confident that these are pretty close numbers. We're not getting anything right now.
Exactly, right. What you can, what I can guarantee you basically is essentially kind of just cash basis reports, you know, they'll have all of the daily transactions that have been entered by the ladies here. But, you know, there's, you know, all sorts of things. The allocating of the administrative expenses, the recording of the depreciation expenses, the, you know, adjusting loan balances, capitalizing assets as they're purchased, all those kind of things that, you know, looking at receivables and what's collectible and what's not collectible, accruing liabilities, those kinds of things are not, you know, really gonna be happening on a month-to-month basis. And you just don't quite have the capacity internally here to have full accrual, you know, accounting records throughout the year.
Anybody have any questions?
I was just wondering, I think from strictly a cash basis, can you comment at all on, not the balances per se, but we're doing okay?
Yeah. You know, there's nothing shocking or remarkable. Yeah, you know, there's nothing shocking or remarkable, at least for me. I travel all over the state, I audit all sorts of entities. I think, you know, there's a significant portion of Alaska, particularly off-the-road system, that's in a very similar position with their finance and accounting departments being, you know, kind of underpowered, needing outside contract assistance. You know, wanting better, better or more information, more current, timely information. So I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but it seems to be very common in Alaska, especially rural Alaska.
Any Council questions, comments? Online, any questions or comments there? I wonder if any people jump in, so I think they're all waiting for something.
Well, and I'm available anytime. You can get my email address from Helen or my office phone number. You guys, anybody can reach out, call me if you have questions throughout the year.
I think there's one other thing that I wanted to have you maybe comment on. We're looking at a, I brought to Council the need for an updating accounting program and it's gonna be cloud-based. And as Gavin and I have been chatting, one of the things he was suggesting was it'll just make it a lot easier to get professional guidance. If we can't find someone who's willing to come and be a Finance Director in Cordova, Alaska, that we can seek that. And maybe you can just comment on the Casell and the need for this improvement.
Yeah, Casell, Casell has its own set of problems. It's very quirky software. There's numerous things where it takes way, in my opinion, it takes way too many steps in the process to get from point A to point B. If you don't do every one of those steps directly, it kind of gets hung up over here and then it just kind of sits there. There are people that run it well and understand it and understand all the quirks, but you really, you've got to have, you know, a really solid understanding of, you know, accounting principles themselves and then also a really solid understanding of how Casell works, which is not intuitive at all. So, yeah, it's a real problem.
So, and this update that we're proposing, you also mentioned that it would be easier with a cloud-based system for us maybe to find financial, regular financial assistance that may not reside in Cordova.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do we kind of know what cloud-based system you're looking at and what is Gavin's opinion of that if we have?
Well, the.
Have we narrowed it down yet or?
Yes, we've narrowed it down and there's many other communities that use it.
Yeah, I think the one that, I think that you're leaning towards is called Munis. It's with Tyler Technologies. There's plenty of them out there. A lot of them are very dated and antiquated like Casell is. Munis is a newer software and they have a school district version. Most of this, we do a lot of school district audits and most of the school districts are switching to their, their school district version. The only municipal client I have is the Fairbanks North Starborough, they're using it.
So we're not just finding something under the rug to pull out and use?
Well, and Helen admitted, I guess, what, is it Cisco or somebody that's been kind of selling her really hard?
Oracle.
Oracle.
Yeah.
But it sounds like they're still, you know, beta testing a lot of the modules and haven't even rolled everything out. And I highly advise against going with the software.
Well, we want something somebody else is using and happy with. And it doesn't have to be the cheapest, you know, we've gone there a time or two. Needs to work.
Yeah. So, and I think it will make not only our lives easier in-house, but it will make the audits easier and hopefully less expensive too, or at least easier, it won't be as burdensome. So thank you for, you can go back nose to the grainstone.
All right, thank you.
And Sam, yes, so next item, Sam Greenwood, our Public Works Director, wants to bring forward an opportunity that has been presented about scrap metal.
I, um, shouldn't touch the microphone. I tried to kind of get it all out in the memo and see if you guys had any questions. I have talked to Marvin last, maybe Friday. And he's working with John Bannon for the trucks, has an ongoing dialogue with him, has secured a place for his crew, is looking for a Baylor to bring up here, a large metal Baylor. So he's pretty serious. I mean, as the Public Works Director and refuse and some of the comments from DEC, it would be great if we could move forward with this and get some of that out of here. He has been, he tried to come once, got sick, got plane canceled. So hopefully he will come maybe next week to be able to get out there and look at the site. But he's worked with, has also talked and worked with Aaron. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or any thoughts here to help.
Kathy?
Sam, I was just trying to remember as I read this, I know which City Manager it was. It was Mark Lynch, but how many years ago was that, that we did this?
Well, I started in 2011 and I think, I think it's 2010. Because it was done, or it was just wrapping up when I started in the fall of 2011.
Okay, that's fair to say.
So it took quite a while to get a, an amount that anybody was interested in looking at. And then when we got there, the prices fell and so we just kept collecting. But the amount of material that is not in the landfill because of that scrap metal is amazing.
I just had a quick follow-up too. Is there any opportunity for us to gather up more before he starts?
That's a conference, we talked about that a little bit. And I think so. I mean, he needs to get his eyes on what's out there. But, you know, if it's successful, he may come back. I mean, the logistics of him being in Yakata is what makes this feasible. And as a logging barge operator in the summer, he's got the solar seasons, so.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds good. Anybody online questions for Sam on this? Is anybody opposed to this? I think you're looking for approval to proceed, right? Is anybody opposed to this going forward? There's no contract or anything yet, but there's.
Yeah, we'll just have the bill of sale will be, and as noted in the thing, it's dated, so it's not like forever. And then we'll have a, I guess you'd call it a contract, just saying, you know, you'll bring it back to where the proper, you won't leave the landfill area trash where you picked it all up and that kind of stuff. As far as a contract, there won't be anything coming back yet.
It will not come back to Council.
No.
Correct.
It's not gonna cost us other than bill of sale and.
Yep, we're just giving it away.
Giving it away, yeah.
Helps us getting rid of it, so.
In multiple ways, yes.
Okay, sounds good. I don't think there's any objection.
Okay, cool.
All right.
I guess I have.
Go ahead.
Quick comment on that. As we move into the harbor project, our waterfront working areas are gonna be pretty full. So I'm just kind of curious what the timeframe is gonna be for, so yeah, there's gonna need to be a staging area for all this stuff somewhere. And I just don't know if we're gonna have the room for that.
Well, if this occurs, it'll be done and over long before even summer. So it won't conflict with the harbor project at this point. If it comes back into a later timeframe, we'll figure it out at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hey, anybody else, Helen?
No, that's it for me, thank you.
Any questions for Helen? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the clerk's report.
So I included the election stuff one more time for the public to see and everybody to realize that the election's coming up on Tuesday. Definitely been a slow turnout because, you know, there's just not that much on there. As we all know, the sample ballot is in here. And then, of course, the, one of the other huge things we do is the assessing and property taxes. And it all falls at the same time. Tina's putting the assessment notices in the mail the day after the election, so on March 8th. And this is a nice report that in all these years, I've not seen this from our contract assessors, Appraisal Company of Alaska before. And I'm very grateful for it, I like it, it's compact, he says what is gonna happen. It's a little two-pager and I thought it was a good idea to have some visibility on that. Our sales ratio number was pretty darn low last year, like 76%. And if you see the way houses are selling in town, you do see that things are selling for way over what they're assessed for, which is why we would have such a low number in a sales ratio of 76%. So the state requires us to be at market value, which assessed values should be market value. So there are some increases happening. It's a new system with this Mars that we're on now. The assessment notice will look a lot different. And Tina and I have pored over the words that are on there. And then we're including another little half-a-page memo, just saying that we're here to help and, you know, call us, email us, how to appeal, all this other stuff. So, you know, we do anticipate a lot of appeals. But I know you guys all know how it works. Even if all assessed values are up, doesn't mean taxes are all going up by that exact same amount, you know, percent. But we may see it this year, so let's start talking to people, I guess. And we're gonna try and do a really good job of it and I'll get some good messaging out on that before March 8th. And that'll be a month-long appeal period. And then Board of Equalization is April 17th. I'll also mention at pending agenda that this is one of those weird years when the first Tuesday is as late as it can be, which is the 7th. So that doesn't coincide with our second meeting to be able to certify the election. So we will have to have a special meeting the week after our March 15th meeting, I guess on that Thursday. I think I put it on the calendar. So we'll talk again as that approaches too. I think that's it, but I can answer questions on that assessing thing or on anything. Thanks.
Questions for the clerk? Anybody online? Okay, not hearing anything. Thank you, Susan. You don't have any correspondence this time? So that takes us to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1204, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, repealing Cordova Municipal Code, Chapter 19.04 Flood Protection and Enacting Chapter 19.04 Flood Plane Management to Adopt National Flood Insurance Act Plan Use, Criteria Set Forth in Federal Regulation as Requirements for National Flood Insurance Program Eligibility and Amending CMC 1.28.05 to Update the FINE Schedule to Reflect Changes to Chapter 19.04. This is second reading and final reading, so any looking for motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1204.
Ms. Sherman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Was that Schaefer?
Yes.
Schaefer.
Okay, Councilmember Sherman?
I ran through this again, which it is my second reading. And I think it's a really good update to our ordinance and it brings us in compliance and acceptability for FEMA. And we'll hopefully never have to call on it for flooding, but it puts everybody in a much better position.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
No, I'm in support.
Councilmember Guard?
I'm also in support.
Councilmember Meyer?
I'm in support too.
Councilmember Carpenter?
No, she's not.
Okay, she's not online. Okay, Councilmember Baylor?
I'm supported.
Okay, it sounded like we had too much objection, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Yes, Kristen Carpenter is absent. Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
And Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Resolution 0323-07, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the City Manager to enter this old source contract with E-Force to provide records management software, off-site data management, and continued technical support for the Cordova Police Department.
Move to approve Resolution 0323-07.
Sherman, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Schaefer.
Okay, Councilmember Carpenter?
Well, I really wanted to thank staff for the background information. Not my daily wick, so I appreciated all the information that was put together. And again, this sounds like something that we need to do, just like we need to do with our financial software. And I liked the idea that it matched with other communities in the state and might offer opportunity for some additional dispatching. And it just sounds like it's kind of made a lot of sense and saved a lot of time and money.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I agree that this seems like it just makes a lot more sense than what we, what they're currently doing. I appreciate it, all the background info. My question is, the contract for this is, I think, I'm looking for the number, I think it was by $100,000. Do you, is there an estimate of what this will, how this cost compares with what our current costs are?
Annual costs?
Yes.
Okay. Chief Goddard's coming up right now to address your questions.
So you're compared to other resources that we looked at or the ones that we're currently using?
Oh, I was just wondering how this, using this system will compare to the costs of the current system? Is it, is it an overall cost savings of like what magnitude?
The overall cost savings is just like we have it in there with sending our guys to training, using different, because what we're doing right now, I'll kind of give background on it. It's just now we have to use six different systems that aren't with this system. So it gets complex, we have to send our dispatchers or correction staffs or police officers, different types of training. So in that overall scheme, I don't have the exact number, but it will help because it's all in one, one program that we can use. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I don't have the overall cost on.
But you're anticipating savings and you won't have to train as much?
Yes.
Everyone gets one training rather than four or five?
Yes.
And the annual cost to support that system isn't substantially more than what you currently pay?
No, now with that, like you said earlier, Mary, you don't want to, you know, pay for something cheap when you have something cheap to deal with it. This is a little bit more overall. So the other program per year, we're paying close around six, five or $6,000. This one will be paying about $12,000. But yet it's, they're maintaining the servers. We don't have to pay for them to maintain services on a web-based program. Where like we have Spillman and all these other programs that you have to buy a server and then have to pay to maintain it. So yes, overall, we will save money with this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Great.
Aye.
Questions for the chief? We've already allocated the funds for this in our capital budget, uh, last meeting, so there's no additional cost at this point there.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else online? Last chance, I think this is just a voice vote resolution?
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Was any opposed? Okay, was unanimous in favor?
Noted.
Okay, unfinished business, none, new business, new business, we got our pending agenda and calendar. So, we've got workshop scheduled next time, is that what I remember?
We're doing a Capitol work session, um, and then housing work session will be, I think we decided in May, um, and then we also, um, I know you requested an update, um, a discussion around bear, um, and garbage cans and whatnot, so, um, those are all in an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Anything we need to do next meeting? In addition to the regular business?
Um, no, I think we're making a couple of appointments, maybe, to Historic Preservation and Parks and Rec is, having, just had a resignation.
Do we certify the election?
Not until, yeah, I wrote it on the calendar, the twenty, we can't on the 15th, it's going to be, yeah, on the 22nd. When we redid election code in 2020, we gave more time for the ballots to be returned, so, I don't know, when we have those early ones, it's been coinciding with the second March meeting, but since this is the latest day the election can be, we need a special, but that's okay. It'll be a quickie.
Our next meeting is during spring break, so I may not be here, but I'd be on the phone if not here.
Okay.
Although, you know, I don't have plans, my wife needs to renew her passport, and that has to be done in San Francisco, so...
Oh, my.
Um, and spring break is about the only time she gets, she's got time to get away.
Right.
Working at the school and then the canneries and the bay, so...
So, we'll see who's in town around then to, uh, chair for you, but it's a couple weeks away, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, I don't really have anything else, if anybody has anything, I mean, we cleaned it up a little bit last time, so we took a few things off, that was good.
Let us know if there's anything you want on the agenda, and we'll get it on there, so, anyway, I guess that's it for pending agenda.
Sounds good.
Are we looking for any...
I can ask real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Were we planning on having the bear interaction, uh, discussion next meeting? I know we've talked about doing it for the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting for a few times.
April 1st, we have it on there.
Sam's going to answer that.
I just wanted to know who we're going to plan on moving.
I will be, hopefully, celebrating a successful ENT doctor visit on the Wednesday of this meeting in Anchorage. We decided last meeting that it would be April...
Fifth.
Fifth, and we will have things, we are, I can give you a quick update, Aaron and I have drafted a letter to, um, the Mobile Home Parks, uh, requiring them to go to dumpsters, except for the very small one, but I can, not very good, I can't remember the name, um, right across from the little chapel.
Burton, oh, uh, Gleason, I don't know. Lake, uh, no.
Anyway, there's one that just, there just isn't enough room to get a dumpster truck in and out of there without taking cars out of the way. So, um, we are working on that, we have, uh, I have drafted an email to Charlotte and talked to her about timeframes, uh, we work with Emily on getting some of the information that we've had of in the past, and, um, so that's where we are at right now.
Okay, so April 5th.
And it's on pending agenda as April 5th. Number nine, under C.
Hey, are you?
Yep. Sorry, Jeff, if you're off, you can just call in and listen if you want.
Pete, no, he's on.
No, he'll be, if he's off council on April 5th.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Which I think he will be.
Yeah, you're, certainly not kicked out of the room, Jeff, you'll be, welcome back intact. Um, okay, audience participation, anything anybody has to say about anything? They're running up in masses. So, we'll go to council comments, we'll start on the line, uh, Councilmember Meyer.
Um, just, thanks for the great meeting, I really appreciated, um, all the background information and, um, that wasn't included in these discussion items, and thank you to staff, and that's it, thanks.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Same comments, thanks, uh, for all the information in the packet, uh, great job.
Councilmember Gard?
Yeah, um, I had to close comments, thanks staff for putting this together, and thank you for persevering through our minor technical difficulties to start, but we got it done. Anyway, thank you very much.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh, thanks everybody for coming out, thanks staff for putting the meeting together and packing everything.
Vice Mayor Baylor?
Yeah, I had those comments, and then just maybe suggested, could we not maybe do a drive-through on this system like ten minutes before meeting, um, just to make sure things up and running, uh, that might be helpful. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, and Councilmember Sherman?
Um, I just wanted to really thank staff, I'm very excited about the steel and metal removal, and I hope we can throw in some of the cars that are in the impound lot before that happens, and I'm really also very encouraged that we are updating both finance and police software because that is something that has needed to happen, and I just want to say, I never liked Cassell to begin with, and we never should have gotten it, and I'm so happy that we're going to a cloud-based program in both cases, it's going to make a world of difference, so...
Yeah, thank you all for, for everything, thanks for everybody for coming online, those of you online, we do have a executive session to go over the clerk's, uh, evaluation, uh, which I do anticipate will be too long, but, uh, I emailed that to all of you, you should have a copy of that in your email, and, uh, I think I gave you one, Kathy, I don't know, printed out, so, thank you all for coming out tonight, we'll take, uh, well, let's go ahead and move to going executive session first, uh, somebody make a motion for that, and then we'll clear the room.
I move we go into executive discussion for purpose of discussion, the city clerk evaluation, because it is subject that may tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided that that person may request a public discussion.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second, this is Schaefer.
Okay, move to executive, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those, the motion carries, we'll take about five minutes and clear...